You don't have homework, you're in my key card.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 28, 2014, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Schlitter?
Sure. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Patz?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three on the agenda is community comment. Per Board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of resident comment. Would anyone like to make a comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Item five is consent agenda. Would any Board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving items 5A through 5H say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Item six, school board announcements. Are there any announcements?
I would like to announce that the date for the National Night Out has been announced. It will be, I believe, Monday, August 4th. Is that right? I have some, I'm having some technical difficulties over here, just so I'm relying on my memory. So, August 4th, mark your calendars. We will get some details to everybody a little bit later. Also, July 4th as well, I will be bringing, putting on the agenda, and we can discuss at some point if we're interested in participating in the Fourth of July Parade again. Thank you.
Any other announcements?
An announcement, I just, oop, I jumped on somebody. Just got informed that this morning that the PAWS Parent Group at Forest Park Middle School handed Principal Reuter a check for $2,500 for furniture to use as he wishes.
That's nice.
So, I thought that was pretty nice.
Very good.
So, strong, strong parent support and...
I'd like to invite the Board to the U-Rock Breakfast, where we have breakfast for all of our recipients this year of the U-Rock Award. That is June 12th, and I believe we start at 7:45. And it will be at Forest Park. So, please join us if you can.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. School board calendar, we have a regular Board meeting on Wednesday, June 18th, at, here at the Education Community Center at 6:00 PM, and a regular Board meeting on Wednesday, June 25th, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. Item eight, liaison reports, personnel and policy. Mr. Nielsen?
Uh, yeah, there is a policy being brought forth for fund balance update. I don't have the policy.
Do we want to just direct that over to Mr. Milzer?
Yeah, I kind of thought he was going to be presenting this anyway, to be honest with you. I don't have the policy, I'm sorry.
Well, we've talked about this a couple of times, as far as ideas for the fund balance policy, to make it more clear. Once the district has enough fund balance to carry us through as far as paying our bills for the year without borrowing, and we were accumulating fund balance to put a purpose to that, so that it was clear in our policy. And I've changed the policy, there's really, part of a sentence, another one added in that first paragraph under the general fund, so that it indicates that we would be using that or accumulating funds for future capital purchases, capital projects, maintenance projects, land purchases, or for other district purposes, and that the district would indicate its intent for maintaining this fund balance each year in its budget information. So, that would be where the Board would decide what projects were most important, or what things were we saving funds for, for the future. And we would have both the, the general piece in the policy, and then in the budget information, we would have more specific information, which could change from year to year. We might add or drop things.
Do I hear a motion to approve revised fund balance policy 3301 as presented?
I would like to suggest a change, or should we do that after we...
I think during discussion, if that's okay?
Okay.
Or unless you want to...
No, I can amend the...
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Klein, and a second by Mrs. Larson. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes. I, I don't really don't think we need, or should have in there for other district purposes. I think we should be clear on the major categories, and this other just is so undefined. I think we needs, the policy should have some boundaries and not just be wide open. Also, clearly, fund balance should be for one-time items and not any kind of operating budget. I'm sure Jim would, would tell you that, that's general practice. So, the other district purposes, to me, is a little bit too wide open, and I would just like us to exclude that piece of it. I mean, if the, a future Board could obviously amend the, the policy if there was some unique thing that came forward, but I think as a, as a practice, it should be for items that are one-time, and that's exactly what this list is, except for this other district purposes, which, like I said, I think the policy should have some boundaries.
I'd, I'd just say that I put that specific phrase in there really for two reasons. One, so that we're not tying the hands of a future Board, although a future Board could change the policy and then do whatever they wanted. And the other thing was to capture things like perhaps technology purchases, where the items are not capital by our definition, but we might be doing a one-time purchase of something large, large number of computers, large number of printers, something along those lines, that it would allow the Board to do that. It takes a Board decision to do this in the first place, so I thought that might be okay. But, you know, if you wanted to take it out, that's fine, too.
Well, the sentence says, "The district may maintain fund balance for other purposes, such as..." And then it ends with "for other district purposes," so...
Are you reading that? Oh, middle... Yeah. The sentence that's being revised starts off with "for other purposes."
Well, that references the previous statement, which is, our primary purpose was for, to avoid short-term borrowing, so it kind of follows that the other, other than short-term borrowing, we would be indicating these items. So, that's what the other, I believe, refers to, that particular other. And Jim, if we could, we could put technology, I wouldn't be opposed to have technology, one-time technology purchases in this list, and then take out other.
I'm, I'm not opposed to taking out "for other" at the end. I don't, I'd like to hear from everyone, actually, on that, or...
I think because of, another major purchase would be made, other district purposes, it would come before the Boards, we would have the opportunity to certainly veto that if we didn't want to make that purchase. And I, I have to agree that I would rather not tie our hands, or the hands of another Board who would maybe read this policy than decide they have to go back, change the policies, then come back and make that purchase. I just think if we leave it that way, we aren't tying our hands, we're leaving our options open for a purchase that we need to be made, that would be approved by the Board, this Board or any other Board. So, I think it's, I think it's really okay to keep that statement in there. That's my opinion.
And I would counter that, to say that policies are to establish some boundaries on how we're operating, and other, to me, just, it's just too broad. So, I think there is a purpose for policies, it's to establish some boundaries, so that administration wouldn't, you know, they would know how, you know, where, what our rules are. And I think that the items that we're listing here is good practice, and I, I can't imagine what the other might be, and I don't even want to imagine what the other might be, but...
But the other would be brought to us, so it wouldn't be something that, you know...
It couldn't be brought...
We wouldn't go out and buy five wave runners for the kids to use in the pond, back and forth in front of the high school. I mean, seriously, I mean, we would, Mr. Milzer, whoever, would bring that to us, and so we would have the option to say no to it, to nix it. I mean, this just doesn't tie our hands, that's all.
Linda, oh...
I can see where we could solve both of your issues, just by saying "or for other district purposes," as approved by the Board of Direct, or the Board of Education. If you add that in there, then it has to come before the Board before you spend it.
Well, that was the point I was going to make, or question I was going to ask. Where in here does it say that using, use of fund balance is coming before the Board? Is that just anticipation, or with the, the budget process? Is that where that is?
Right, it would always be part of the budget process. There'll probably be, for the kinds of things we're talking about, it's, it's more to approvals, because we'd have to talk about this ahead of time to say, what is it that we're looking at expending this for over a long period of time, picking a project, and then either sticking with that or adding, adding or subtracting to that list over time. So, so the Board would be looking at it then, and then also as part of the budget process, when you get the budget and the, the categories are listed for fund balance, and then we would have whatever it is that we're buying, the money we had set aside for that in there.
But this doesn't say subject to Board approval, does it? Like, if something comes up in the middle of the year, the budget is already established, it's February, and we need to, looking at some purchases where...
Right, but we're, we're not really talking about that piece of it. I mean, that would happen if we had some kind of an emergency, huge emergency, and we had to expend funds for that, that automatically comes out of fund balance. What we're trying to explain in this piece is why we're maintaining fund balance over and above what we need in our stated purpose for not borrowing. So, we're saying, over and above that, we're going to maintain funds and grow funds, but why are we doing that? And this answers the question for that.
And I also think as a policy, your fund balance can be a tricky thing, because taxpayers don't like to see a whole bunch of fund balance just piling up, and legally, you shouldn't be taxing people unless you have a purpose for it. That's, again, why we even have this policy, because by law, we're levying, levying taxes for a purpose, not just to accumulate it in a, a bank account. So, that's why it's important that we say what we're doing, what we're saving it for. And this other, I'm not sure if that's definitive enough in what we're, you know, levying these taxes for, other. That's why, to me, it's important that we put some boundaries on here and specify these one-time items.
I was going to ask if, Linda, if you would be comfortable with "or other one-time purchases" to make it clear that it's not to be used for any sort of operating expenses, or does that not get you quite to where you want to be with it?
If I could make a comment on that, you generally in a policy want to make it somewhat broad, and you don't want to limit it to one time, because you could have the same issue come back more than once. I think Alan's point, if you were just to take the word "district" out of there and put "Board approved," you would have everything you need in place, because it still has to come before the Board, and you don't know what might be able to, we never thought of.
So, have it read for other Board-approved purchases?
I think that's what you're suggesting, Alan?
Yeah.
I like that. I think that's a good idea.
I agree.
Well, let me ask Jim this question, since, Tim, you bring up a good question. If we pass this policy, which says that we are going to be designating fund balance in the budget, then that technically, you couldn't do it outside the budget, correct? So, we wouldn't have these mid-year uses of fund balance, because our policy would say it's in the budget, it's a one-time designation that occurs annually.
With the, are you saying with the change that was just made?
No, with, with the statement, indicate intent in its budget information.
Mm-hmm. So, every year that would be addressed, you're saying, Linda, in the budget?
Correct. That would be the time that we do it.
Fund balance intent would be discussed at the time of...
And only at that time, not, these projects that come outside the budget cycle wouldn't, shouldn't happen, because our policy is that we do this within the budget. I want to make sure that we have that common understanding.
The thing to Alan's point, it would allow you then, if you had something come up, if it were listed as for other district, or for other Board-approved purposes, now you wouldn't have to have not only, not only the item come before the Board, but you wouldn't have to have a change of policy come before the Board, too, because that's what it would require each time you did that, if something unusual came up. That's why a little bit of broadness in a policy is a good thing.
I think that if, if it's in the budget, what our intent is at the time that we approve the budget, that that's, that's critical, that that be there. However, that said, priorities and needs could change in the interim, so I, I don't know that it necessarily precludes changing that. It's just, that is our intent at that time. The Board would obviously have to approve it. I don't know what the rest of the Board thinks.
Well, what do you think, Linda, about changing the district to Board-approved?
I'm more comfortable with adding technology purchases and, and leave the policy as is, and then leave, and not adding, because I'm opposed to adding broad other purposes. I have another question for Jim also. So, I know there is some thought of, of using fund balance for some larger building improvement projects that, you know, may or may not occur in a year. Let's say we have a $5 million building effort at the middle school, and we don't want to typically designate all of that in one year. Can this accumulate across budget years? Like, budget year one, we save $1 million to go towards this project, then budget year two, we see another $1 million goes towards this project, does this allow that to happen? Incrementally accumulating funds for a larger project?
Uh, yes, this would allow that to happen, and there was, in addition, really, to, to this piece of it, there was a law passed last year that allows school districts to establish another fund that would be used to pay for a project like that, and it's brand-new. I, I talked to the Department of Public Instruction about it, they're just starting to look at writing guidelines for it, but it is available for school districts. So, I'm looking at it very closely as something that we may want to do for that, and you're essentially transferring your purchasing power from the general fund to that fund...
For a real purpose.
For that purpose.
I think if you look at the policy, it was revised in June of 2011, and it was revised because of some recommendations from the auditor, and you'll see some other sections within the policies that speak to committed fund balance amounts and so forth. It's, it's rather technical, but we were told by the auditors at that time that that would need to be included in our policy, so those, those are some pieces of this as well, that I think the Board needs to be aware of and consider.
Mrs. Schlitter, did you have a comment or not?
I think that, I like how Alan worded it, "for other Board-approved district purposes."
I think he wanted "district" out, actually, "Board-approved purposes."
Correct.
Well, I also would draw your attention to some of the other funds, Food Service Fund, we don't have any general statement there. We say, "provide for the maintenance and efficiency of the equipment, and to help the program bridge years in which is not financially successful." So, there's no general other statement included there. Also, Recreation and Community Education Fund, there is no general statement there, and Debt Service also, so for consistency purposes, we, would be another reason why we don't need the other district purposes.
I think those other funds don't have near the potential activity and impact that, that the, the fund balance itself has. So, that's, that's why you wouldn't put those kind of statements in there.
Well, unanticipated expenditures, that could be a, a huge list of anything.
Where do you see "unanticipated"?
Under Food Service Fund, under Rec and Community Ed Fund.
That's the general statement, but it does very specifically at the end say what that means.
Well, is there an amendment to the original motion?
I'll make the amendment to exclude, or to modify, the other district purposes, to remove that statement and add technology purchases.
We have a motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion to amend dies. Is there any other amendment?
I'd make a motion that we change "for other district purposes" to "for other Board-approved purposes."
A motion to amend by Mr. Alexandrovich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion?
And what would be the process for approving those other Board purposes?
How do we approve anything here at the Board meetings?
Would it be...
There's a, there's a motion, there's a second, there's discussion, and then it's approved or not approved. I think we go through the normal process.
And that could happen anytime.
Sure.
Just like the football field, the baseball field, those are items that came up as, it was seen as opportunities or needs that needed to be filled.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Although, I think, I just want to clarify with Jim, though, the intent, though, is not to do as, as Alan just indicated. It is, the intent is to do it as part of the budget, is that correct?
Uh, the intent in the general accumulation of funds is to do it as part of the, the budget process, but it wouldn't preclude the Board from doing it at another time, as he suggests. Something comes up during the year, the Board could make another decision, add something to the list, or take it off. It would still be possible, and I think you'd want that leeway.
As a side comment, because we are looking at things like the football field, the baseball field, et cetera, are these going to be just reflected in the budget as expenditures, maintenance, capital, like, expenses, and then is the fund balance transferred into the general fund going to be looked at as that source of revenue to pay for it, to keep the budget balanced?
Yeah, exactly. It has to be added to the budget, and then if, if expenditures exceed revenue, then fund balance would fill that in.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion to amend by Mr. Alexandrovich, who's a second, by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And on the original, um, motion to approve Board policy, fund balance 3301, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Item 8B, we have ratification of the 2014-15 wage agreements for the Franklin Education Association, FEA, Franklin Secretary's Office Assistance and Educational Assistance, FSOEA, and Custodial Bargaining Units, AFSMI, Council 48, Local 2. And this is an action item, Dr. Miller?
We have an opportunity to meet with our represented groups within the district and discuss their wage increase for the next school year. I would like to request that the Board ratify each of these wage increases at 1.46% of the base wage for these employees.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
I would make that motion.
We have a motion by Mrs. Larson, uh, to ratify the 2014-15 wage agreements as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Item 8C is approval of a 2014-15 wage increase for the district administrator. This, this is coming to the Board, this is our decision. Dr. Patz, did you have anything you wanted to say or recommend?
No, we traditionally, other than the last couple of years, have pretty slump all the administrators together into the pool. There was a recommendation, I guess, to put my particular portion of it out. There was some discussion on that last year, so it was, it was the result of a Board request to have my, my portion of this singled out. So, I don't know if you want me to jump ahead a little bit, but as far as the other district administrators and the non-represented staff, along with what Judy recommended, for the non-certified staff, we're looking at, as we had mentioned to the Board previously, across the Board, 1.46 for everybody, but certainly the Board can do whatever you wish, so...
Do I hear a motion, pardon me for my cough, do I hear a motion of a 1.46% wage increase for the 2014-15 school year for the district administrator?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Item 8D is the approval of a 2014-15 wage increase for the district administration. Dr. Patz?
Very pleased with our administrative team. I think they, each year, they increase in their effectiveness and their, what we're doing in our buildings is really a tribute to the, to what's going on with those people, along with our directors. I, I really do believe, and regardless of the audience I had, I would tell you that I think we have an outstanding group of administrators, building level, in this building in particular, that we can be very proud of. We, we don't rest on our laurels, but, so, my recommendation would be for the Board to approve the 1.46 wage increase for the administration. That would include all the principals and directors.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve a 2014-15 wage increase of 1.46% for the district administration?
So, moved.
Motion by Mr. Alexandrovich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, is there any discussion?
Is there any link to performance? I mean, you're, you're evaluating...
It's all linked to performance, Linda.
I, I know, but in terms of all getting the same?
Yeah. Yep. If we had reason to either, in, in years past, what we've done, we've asked the Board to approve just the general 1.46 for everybody, pull the other, and at that time, there were, there were occasions when we wanted to maybe adjust some salaries, up or down. This year, we're not in that situation. We're very pleased with where everybody's at, and there's no reason for us to look at any downward adjustment, or the upward adjustment, I think is fair for everybody, that we've, we're the same team.
You know, people have been here at different periods of time and...
Sure.
Different stages in the career and...
Yeah, and I think we tried to adjust that, oh, it was back, probably far back, it was five or six years ago, we tried to make some adjustments for people, because it's, it is getting a little different when we bring somebody new in, when they have experience, and so we take a look at that generally, you know, at their starting salary, but then over time, sometimes that gap widens a little bit, and... and for the most part, we're, we're pleased where that, that scale is at right now.
Any other discussion? Hearing on, we have a motion by Mr. Alexandrovich and a second by Mrs. Larson to approve the 2014-15 wage increase of 1.46% for the district administration. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Extension. Motion carries. And then item 8E is an approval of a 2014-15 wage increase for non-represented personnel. Dr. Patz?
This, the non-represented personnel, help me with my list, everybody. We got our school psychologists, our reading specialists.
Nurse.
Nurse, school nurse.
OTs, PTs.
OT, PTs, those people that are not administrators, they're not a teacher, but they fall into that support group, not, not like the secretarial group or, or the custodian or anybody, but they're very valuable people. We're, we're very pleased with, Paulette primarily works with a lot of those people in special services, and so our recommendation would be to approve the 1.46% for those people as well. That'd be also the rec department, those kinds of things.
Bus drivers?
No.
No? No?
Yeah, bus drivers are non-represented employees. Yeah, they will be-
I'm sorry, yeah. I was thinking of the bus contract that we have.
Yeah, yeah. Our drivers would be on the list.
Yeah, we have our own. I was thinking of our road drivers.
Technology people.
Do I hear a motion to approve the 2014-15 wage increase of 1.46% for non-represented personnel?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Again, a second.
Second, she can have it. By Mrs. Schlitter. Is there any discussion? Hearing on, all those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Extension. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 9A is a Sabre Stadium project update.
I had sent an update to the board on, on Tuesday, just regarding where we're at in, in terms of the funding for the project, as you're well aware from a few weeks ago in previous board meetings. As a result of when we bid the project and the environment for construction and so on, the bids came in higher than what we had anticipated by $300,000, actually $330,000. I had outlined where we were looking at making, you know, the improvements if the board does approve those funds. We think they're pretty important. Pretty is probably too mild. When we look at such things as the storage buildings, if we're out there today, that we were out there with our first meeting with our construction people, which is, by the way, that's already started and there's a lot of dirt moving and it's pretty exciting. But we really need to have places to store some of those equipment. If we were to leave them out like they have been in the past, a set of pits, for example, landing pits we're talking about now for pole vaulting and for high jumping is a $30,000 expenditure, and we don't need to be getting into those year after year. We're also talking about storing our hurdles and the starting blocks, and there would be some track maintenance type of materials that would be in there. And there never is really any opportunity for us to have enough storage area, particularly with athletic facilities, so that would be the one of them. And then the list of, as far as the construction of the track surface is one that I, I'm pretty, that one to me is really critical. We've spent a lot of money on track improvements in the district over, at least since my time here, and I know before then, with just repairing it. Part of that goes back to when you have a track, traditionally you just laid your track down, you ran it. Well, since then, technology and, and the way tracks are built and so on, they now make a covering that goes over the top of your final cover, so to speak, that really puts a premium on the longevity of your track. It, it weathers much better, it's a better surface to run on, it's, it's a coating that goes over the top of it, and when we took, that's a, you know, an expenditure of about $56,000, $57,000. We have eaten up, I know Jim helped me out if you can, if you remember, but I know for a fact that, that at least $60,000 in the short time that I've been here, we've had to put into repairs because that track has been in such bad shape. So, you know, it's one of those investments that, I can't tell you that it would prolong the track for 20 years because that's, there's too many conditions that would influence that, too many variables, but we think it's a necessary and viable option. So, the other thing I would like to really reemphasize with the board is that when we had the project from the start to the design, we never once put any fluff or the, or looked at, this would be a nice-to-have type of thing. We looked at, what do we really need to have to make this, you know, a good facility, actually a great facility, without going overboard? You know, we didn't buy the highest premium track, and we didn't do some of those other things that, you know, if we had the money, that we probably would have gone through and done. So, as I said, the construction has started, and we are asking the board at this time to approve us moving forward with an additional expenditure of $330,000 to complete the project as designed, and we think it's the right thing to do at the present time. We do believe strongly that if we don't do these things, that in a short time, we'll be coming back, not only to repair or to, you know, upgrade what we've done or fix or whatever it might be, but also the cost to do that in years to come is going to increase about 7% a year. So, that's, I think, another reason why we believe strongly and we're making the recommendation to you tonight.
Are there any questions to Dr. Patz or Mr. Moser?
If, if we've been keeping all this equipment just out and not in any kind of a structure, how much replacement have we had to go through? And let me, let me say that, setting this up for, would it make some sense that we wouldn't build that building for a year, for example, take it into the next budget, but delayed that, that particular one? That was one that I saw that we could possibly push off. I agree with you, quoting the track, I think that makes just infinite amount of sense. I don't know about the dugouts and the other, the press box, what, what that does, and if we try to delay that a year, other than 7%, it, does it make it more difficult? Would we, would we ruin somewhat the things that we've built this year trying to get that done?
Yeah, I think Alan and I would respond to that. The easiest way for me, and I hope Jim would support this, would be to say that with all of these, if we didn't have the ability to do it, we would be sitting here saying we need, we need to look at it at next year's budget or future budget. Because we have the ability at this time, we think it's, it's wiser to do that. In particular, to the storage buildings, if you could go over there tonight and look at, and those pits are laying right there inside our, an area, as soon as you walk into the stadium, they're in terrible condition. They've got mice in them, they've got lice in them, mold in them, and just from staying out, the hurdles are rusted and so on. So, I, I get your point. Could they go for another year? It's just another year closer to us having to dish out more money for the replacement of pits and, and the storage areas, we think, pretty vital.
Well, I would make the motion to approve the additional $330,000 to complete the Sabre Stadium project as designated, as designed.
Motion by Mrs. Larson?
And I will second that.
Second by Mrs. Klein. Is there any discussion?
Oh, just, go ahead, Linda. Let me go. Well, you got retained construction and dugouts and press box, $105,000. I know that in the other document, we got the block, no brick, for the dugout and the, and the press box was $30,000. So, there must be more in there as a deduct. Can you just explain a little bit about what, what's in there? It's another $75,000 that you had in here.
It was $105 for the buildings themselves as block face, and then another $30,000 for the brick to match the other buildings that are there.
Well, what's, what's this $105 deduct about? What is, what does that represent?
That would, since we already, we already had a deduct for going brick to block, that would be the rest of the building, just wiping it out. It wouldn't exist at all.
So, you're saying we wouldn't have dugouts or a press box?
Right. No dugouts, no press box, no storage buildings.
Well, just $105 I'm talking about.
The $105, yeah. Would just be-
So, that would eliminate the dugouts and the press box?
Yes.
I understand. But we need to have the dugouts, so that facility is like the other facility, is it not?
Right.
Oh, the, the second $30,000, that's the $30,000 that's referenced in the other document. And the coding makes sense. You know, my comment was going to be, we're, we're two weeks away from our budget discussion, and it would, I would almost like to see just how this would fit into the budget, and then look to see where we are once you get everything put together for approval on what we're going to need as an additional fund balance, because we're this close to getting that document anyway.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to reiterate that this does not fit into the budget next year, just like it didn't fit in the budget this year. These are projects, when we talk about doing them out of fund balance, we're saying, it doesn't fit in our budget. We're going to do it, it's going to be an additional expenditure that will use up some of our fund balance. So, it, it isn't affecting next year's budget at all, because we're not trying to fit it into our budget. We're saying, we're going to come out with a balanced budget to begin with, and then this project goes on top of that, and that's the way we use fund balance to pay for it. So, that's why it doesn't make a difference if we do it next year, or the year after, or the year after that. We're not, we're not displacing any educational funds by doing this.
I must have been mistaken then, because I know when we were at the high school, I thought you had talked about, you weren't sure how much of this was going to actually have to come out of fund balance, depending on how things went with the budget. So, you may not even- this is when we first got the $408,000 over?
Yeah.
You're like, well, we might not even have to use all of this. So, that's why-
Yeah.
I was still working off of that, thinking, well, let's just see how, when you get the budget put together, let's just see where we are.
Yeah, that, that's true. That's true. Some of it, it to the, I mean, we can say it's coming out of fund balance, but if we did well on our budget and our expenditures were lower than our revenue, the rest of that would be used to pay for this. So, it wouldn't have to be the entire thing coming out of fund balance. That's what I was referring to. But as a planning kind of tool, we're saying, we're not, we're not changing our, our budget for this. We're not, we're adding it on top of our budget for next year. Now, it could be that part of it's paid for, which I would think, by coming in under budget on everything else. That's probably what we'd look at, but we're not making it part of our budget from the start.
Well, you're saying that we are planning to use fund balance, but, I mean, that is the plan.
The plan is to use fund balance, if, if that's the way it turns out, that's-
That's on an actual basis. That's on an actual basis, it'll fall the way it falls, but from the planning standpoint, we are using fund balance.
Right.
And I guess I would say, Tim, if that happens or not, it really is a board decision. We could say we have a $500,000 maintenance project, base dollars, is that right? Does that, got the number right? Typically, every year, we spend $500,000?
Right, on the projects.
Correct. We, we could prioritize as a board and say, these are our priorities. We would have that option, correct? As a board, we could prioritize those projects to include the press box, the storage buildings, and make them part of the next year's budget. And I know your recommendation is not to do that, but I'm saying that the board could do that.
Right, the board could do that. It would be, just that you'd be displacing the projects we were already going to do.
Correct, but they would be on a list, like they're all on the list. So, and I guess from my perspective, I, I like to see this board honor the budget that we approved. You know, we, that's the, they raised the funds and we approved it all within that framework, and I think there is an option to move some of these into the next year's budget. Yes, we would have to work at it, but I think there's a segment of the community that expects us to, you know, work a little bit at this. Yes, it would be easy to take the money from fund balance. It'd be the easiest thing to do, but sometimes we, I think we, if it's really worth it, we should be working a little bit harder to honor the budget, make some priority decisions. And I'm not talking like, you know, two years from now. We're talking about a fiscal year that starts July 1st. We're talking about using this, the softball field, not this year, but a year from now. So, this is not real unreasonable things that I'm suggesting. So, and that's just my, I mean, that's why I would say that we should honor the budget and not approve additional funds at this time, but look at it as part of the next budget cycle, which happens in three weeks. That's where I'm coming from.
I mean, I, I think the reason why that we, that we couldn't do this project for 2.875 had little to do with the timing of the bidding, and had everything to do with the fact that this isn't a 2.875 million dollar project. I mean, it's, it just, the estimates were just a little bit off. So, now, this is the situation that we're in. I still support it. I've said that all along. I just was going to see how, what could fit into the budget, give us a little better handle. Instead of taking another 330 off of the fund balance, give us that little bit more information on how the rest of the budget might fit in and where we, where we would use some of this.
Yeah, so while, while I would say we're, we're technically putting it on top of the budget, anything we save during next year's budget, if we come in under budget, tho, those amounts will not come out of fund balance. So, it would be unlikely that all of this would come out of fund balance, because we're most likely going to come in under budget. That was what I was talking about last time. So, it's, it's not really in the budget, but if we do have funds left at the end of the year, it would help to pay for this without taking money out of fund balance. But if we were to use the entire budget, then that amount would come out of fund balance.
There's another part of this that, the logistical part of it, if we were to complete the project without this and then have to go back and do that, now all of a sudden, we're going to have to go back over existing facilities. It would be, it would disrupt some of the planting, some of the food, you know, the grassy areas and so on and so forth that we have to do. We have to plant as far as building materials far enough out to do those kinds of things. So, there are some logistical issues, and I just bring that up as a point, because we're at that point where we have to make a decision one way or the other, and I would, again, recommend, you know, as part of the recommendation, I think it's really important that we do it right the first time. You know, I wouldn't say that if we didn't have the ability to do it. I, I believe from a, from a district budget standpoint, in talking with Jim, I think we'll come in a little under budget, hopefully, and that can be, you know, helped with the, with the fund balance. But as he said, whether we do it this year or next year, it's coming from the same place, so.
You know, I couldn't agree more. If we're going to spend, spend this kind of money, I don't want to be looking at this project and go, I wish you should have done this, or we could have done that. It's going to be nice, it's going to be quality, it's going to be a, a great facility. So, I don't want to start looking at, on the list, A, B, C, and D, and start, start skimping on that. I guess all I'm saying is, we have 2.875 million ready to go, they're going to be moving dirt, and, you know, could we see in, at the June 18th meeting, where do you think this might fit in? Do you have, or do you have everything all put together? How could this, could you fit this in anywhere else to have this 330 be less than what we're going to be earmarking toward the fund balance? But, but I agree. I don't want to start taking stuff out of the project. I'm just trying to find how we can get all this to fit more into what we're talking about.
I think two things, Tim. I think, you know, I, I think we feel somewhat confident that we'll come in under budget. I don't want to speak for Jim. So, you know, that, and that's, you know, the 18th is a little bit less than a month away. And then the other part of it is, is that, you know, to proceed with the project a month from now, to be able to say, okay, now come in and do this, it really hampers what we're trying to do. I get what you're saying, but I don't think it has an impact on the budget, because even if we did not come in under budget, and we use fund balance for that, it's on top of the budget, so it's not reflective on this year's budget or next year's budget.
But, I mean, I, I agree, but I don't think they're putting up buildings by the 18th. They're certainly not going to be putting on fascia for the, I mean, we need to construct the dugouts and press box, but I don't think they're going to be putting the finer details on, right?
Well, but you, you have to do the grading, you have to put the footings in, you have to order the materials for the buildings and so on and so forth.
Right.
Because the intent is to have this all done by August, at least a large, large portion of it, with a few maybe exceptions.
Are there any other big numbers you see coming down the pipe that might be? Did we get some answers on some of the soil issues?
Matter of fact, we did, just today. Matter of fact, I just brought the report to Jim. We were a little nervous about that. Matter of fact, Dave was out there today too, and we got it, we got a really good report on the soil, so we didn't-
That was worth being nervous about, because that number was big.
Yeah, it was a big number, and when they were tearing it up yesterday, I kept seeing those bottles, just rolling dollar signs over, but they did another sample, and it came in good, it's all in good shape.
So, that number won't be a problem?
It's not to say that they couldn't find a patch here or a patch there, but overall, we're in very good shape.
What about the start, the delay of the start of the project with the anticipation, and the contract being August 22nd? Have Nicholas said anything about having to extend that out or anything?
No, they feel very confident. They told us point blank, we'll get it done for you. You know, it could come down to, when I say get it done, I don't want to miss representative, the field will be done and playable. We may not have the lines on the track, for example, or something like that at the time.
And that cell tower, that, the timing-
Jim was working with, with Horizon on that too, to get that all resolved, because that's a big part of it as well.
That would be a concern of mine also, when looking, there's no contingency money at this point anywhere in the project, and that would be another reason to be cautious about the whole Mac maybe on the storage buildings till we get a little further on, because there is no contingency money anywhere in here, and it's a very difficult site, and anything could happen. So, this may not be the end of the request for dollars.
From my perspective, that would be the reason to move ahead, to get that out of the way, so that we did- From my perspective, that would be the reason to move ahead, to get that out of the way, so that we did have anything else. We've got some of the things that we are looking for completed, and then if we have an exception to that in some way, we're able to deal with that on a smaller scale. And it wouldn't put any of the other parts of the project to delay them any further. Because if we came back and said, doing it that way, well, then are we gonna put that off two years then, or three years? And then we're playing a guessing game and.
I just think there's a reason we have this on the long-range plan in the first place, and that, I just think it was pushed too fast and we were told we'd be saving money by doing this when we did. And it didn't turn out that way. We're not gonna save money. And I just, it's blurry accountability to me, and I can't, I can't explain to the whole community why it's going to cost this much and.
Well, I would say that it's much easier to explain to the community the fact that we had a group that went out there and raised nearly a million dollars at this point and that we, when we initially talked about it, we looked at it being two years out too. But I can guarantee you that if this project is three million dollars this year, next year's gonna be three and a half to four million dollars. So, you know, sometimes you have to look at the economy of scale and whether that's gonna take you short term or long term. And when I look long term, I'd rather have my dollars, you know, defined early enough on so that I'm not projecting out, well, if we don't do it this year, is it gonna be another five hundred thousand? Because then we're coming back saying, we should have done this two years ago. And I know the community people would come back and say, what were you guys thinking then? To me, they'll say it, because I get that right now. Why didn't you fix this track ten years ago? I don't have an answer for them.
Well, we do have an answer for them, because it wasn't in the budget. We do things and we can, we plan and budget for them. That's when we do them. So you could always say, you know, do it now versus, you know, I hear that all the time.
I agree, but then you could also say that one of the reasons we're doing it now is because we had a group come forward. If we put it off and that group was nonexistent, now we have to come up with that additional amount of money as well on the school district.
I mean, I appreciate the fundraising effort, but, you know, we had a budget in mind. And I think we should, like I said, I'm a budget person. I like to stick to budgets. I think there's a way to add to this by including it, prioritizing the next year's budget, which starts July first. It could easily be accommodated in that budget and you roll along and we able to demonstrate that we have honored the budget and accomplished the project. Everything is on this list. Until deferring maybe or prioritizing within that five hundred thousand, but it could be done. And that's, again, my opinion, so.
Jim, you feel pretty good about the, I don't know if that's contracts, but that you have in place with the donors, because I know some of them were over quite a period of time. Do you have paperwork on these donations and everything?
Yeah, I'm working on the pledge with an attorney right now. But we feel confident these groups are, especially the longest one is a group that gives us money every year for other purposes and are really a friend of the district in the long term. So I'm not at all concerned about that. The others have already made first donations and have, you know, maybe four more payments to make, something like that. So I think we're solid on those.
Yes.
I'd be happy to get something. If you need any more documentation, I think the big donors, we have documentation, some are, the doctors. I presented a letter to the board anyway in the February meeting. If you want me to get something from the big donor, I'll have it to you in a matter of days. They're, I think they've already contacted the board and support project, plenty of who they are. If you need something more concrete, more solid, just say the word out for you in a matter of days. They're as solid as a rock, so.
Mr. Burdles, would you mind explaining the nine-year donation?
The what?
The nine-year donation.
That's the doctors. They've already paid fifteen thousand. They've committed a hundred and fifty thousand over ten years, and they've already paid fifteen already in the bank.
Now, did you have any thoughts on this?
No, I agree that some of these things to not do them will cost us much more in the long run. And I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, I don't wanna have, I don't wanna start taking this part of the project.
No. And I really don't like spending extra money either. But when you're weighing both sides of it, at some point, the tail, the scale has to tip to one direction or the other.
Yeah, and again, my only thought there was just to get a better idea as to how all of this would fit into the budget, but if it's gonna be on the side and not fit into the budget, then very good stuff.
What is your limit? How much if the administration comes back again? Is there a limit?
Well, I know that's the position where, that I don't like to be in. Because, I mean, one point eight, two point four, two point eight, three point two. I mean, I don't have an answer of what that would be. I mean, if this extra money that came in said we needed another eight hundred thousand, I mean, how fast are you to make the motion to accept it? I mean, I don't, but it's kinda hard to answer.
But that's kinda unlikely. What we were dealing with was estimates, and now we're dealing with contracts. That are, they're going to go ahead and consider for this price.
Oh, I agree.
And so I don't see anything additional coming up, especially if the land didn't have any issues. Yeah, so I was thinking, okay. I don't know what else there would be. We have all permits, the city's, everything is kinda set. It's not to say that there's not gonna be something, but I don't, I just can't foresee another twenty thousand either.
But it's possible. It's unlikely, but it's possible. And so, it was kinda like, I guess, the pool. I mean, you set a number for the pool, and until they get it ripped up, you don't really know, so.
If that were to happen, then we could follow Mrs. Witkowski's idea, correct, and prioritize that five hundred thousand dollar list of improvements and get that extra thing.
Exactly. We could do that way out of the list.
Please let me be very clear. I am talking above and beyond three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
But the concept would be the same.
But the concept will be the same. I'm just trying to settle maybe Mrs. Evans' fears or, you know, kind of, settle Mr. Nielsen's fears or whatever. But I'm saying that would be above and beyond if that horrible thing would happen, that twenty thousand dollars. We could do that. Yes, Mr. Milzer?
Right.
But you have to remember, that you're having Peter pay Paul.
I understand.
I know, but I don't wanna make it sound like, you know, there's, it's, you know, oh, we can take it out here and we'll be okay. We're losing a lot on the other end of projects that we've already prioritized. So I just think we have to leave that out there. Yes, it could come in, no question, but that's.
But that would be the additional money. If something unforeseen after this point happened, we could actually get that money out of there if we had to.
You could do it there. You could do it from now to do it.
All right.
Is there any other discussion?
Hearing none. Motion by Mrs. Larson and second by Mrs. Klein to approve the addition of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, is that how the motion, can you read? Of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from fund balance to use toward the completion of the Sabre Stadium project.
Could you include the total project cost in that motion?
No, my motion stands as that's the way it's stated. I don't wanna change it.
Were you reading the motion or were you?
No, I wasn't reading the motion.
Can we include that in the motion? I'd like to amend the motion to include a total project cost. Jim, what would that be?
I'd have to look it up.
Could you please combine the softball stadium with it? I'm assuming you're including that as one project at this point.
I think you're getting away from an issue here because we're talking about a recommendation for a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar fund balance expenditure. If we're gonna get into the total project cost, you're talking about a whole nother issue. I think you have to be careful there, because now we're talking about, you'd be able to say, okay, we said the project cost then shouldn't be this, and it's part of that motion.
My motion was to approve the administration's recommendation of three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty thousand additional dollars to complete the Sabre Stadium project as designed.
I'd like to amend that motion.
I didn't say from fund balance, but that was what my motion was.
As designed?
Yes.
Could you state the motion again?
Mrs. Larson would have to read it again. I'm recording it, so.
My motion was to approve the administration's request of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to complete the Sabre Stadium project as designed.
I'd like to amend the motion to add additional words for a total project cost not to exceed a three million two oh five.
There's a motion to amend by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second? Hearing none, motion dies. Okay, we have the original motion by Mrs. Larson, as she has read several times, as designed.
One more point of discussion?
Okay, second.
If the project would have gone over a nickel, then the project wouldn't have been able to move forward. And that's why I just didn't wanna put that toll on.
Okay. Okay, motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Mrs. Klein. Can we roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Nielsen?
No.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
No.
Mrs. Witkowski?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
I say yes.
Motion carries four to three. Thank you. Item nine, E, Board Goals Administration Feedback Discussion.
What you're getting is just a recap of what was discussed at the retreat. We were asked as the administrative team to go back and review this and put our thoughts together. And I can quickly review this for you. The group that was talking, the fiscal group that was talking first, their recommendation of what they had put up on the board at that time was a board discussion and consensus on the use and purpose of fund balance accumulation by the end of July, July two thousand and fourteen and yearly thereafter. It's our belief that that was already addressed or is being addressed through policy. So we don't really think that that would be necessarily a board policy in our opinion. The second statement that was made was board discussion and consensus on how the administration reports on the district's financial position during the fiscal year. This discussion will occur by the end of February two thousand and fifteen. Our belief was that since this comes up on an annual basis and we make necessary changes and so on and so forth as the year goes on. And Jim, please jump in, because you were sort of the leader of that group. But this is more of a reporting mechanism. I guess you could, it could qualify as a goal in some way, but I'm gonna leave the people that were in that group maybe go at that a little bit and if there's something we're missing in terms of discussion. Let me go through all of them, then we can come back. Middle section was to annually employ and retain high-quality staff who perform at a proficient level. We don't really believe this is a board goal. It's more of an administrative operation. We do this through hiring process, through our evaluation process, which is really, I think, being, through educator effectiveness, is really being strengthened. And I think it's my understanding that when we talked about action steps, that there was, you know, some concern about the fear of losing good people and so on and so forth. And I think we had, that night anyway, it was mentioned that when Judy gives her personnel reports, she could include a discussion on people that were leaving, why, if they would share with us why they were leaving, so that we would have a better understanding of, you know, our turnover rate, why people were leaving, and so maybe that could be accomplished there. And then the second part of that one was annually monitor growth of the whole child using performance indicators on the Franklin Public School, Continuous Improvement Framework. We think that's a pretty good goal. Quite honestly, that's why we're here. And so that's what we try to do with our reports and so on and so forth. But I think we can up our game in terms of giving a little bit more of a detailed, particularly in Mike's report, he does an excellent job on that. But we can do that more frequently during the year and break it apart a little bit so we don't have one big report at the end of the year. However, we have to take into consideration that some of the data we get back comes at the wrong time. We don't have the ability to do it until later in the year, like our school report card and WKCE results and so on and so forth. And then the third, the bottom reference there is to develop a three-year strategic facility and programming plan to address future and current needs. It's our belief that that's a good goal. It involves the board. It involves community engagement. It involves taking a look at not only our facilities, but our programming. We think that's really important because that really has an impact on budgeting in a lot of ways. You know, education is changing. Programming that we need to have for our kids to be successful changes. Sometimes that requires an adaptation of facilities, maybe more facilities down the road, who knows? But certainly, it could involve personnel as well. So this was one that was, they broke four bullet points out of there into having a six-month board review on this process to ensure community engagement, which is part of the original goal, to make sure there's representatives from board, administration, community, and work team. And then with this board, or what this goal did not include at this time, were the development of action steps to measure the progress. And that would take place with a designated group to do that, so.
So the next, well, first, we'll discuss all these, and then the next step after that is to decide on another retreat?
I guess, yeah, that's up to you. You know, as the moderator said at the retreat, you don't necessarily, first of all, you know, you don't have to have board goals, period. But you could have one goal. You could have ten goals and so on and so forth. As we looked at the list of what we discussed that night, we liked the idea of, you know, annually monitoring the progress. And when we say annually, that would probably be broken down into almost a monthly basis, whenever we have student information data that we can present to you. And so we thought that was a good goal, and then we also thought the goal of the strategic facility and programming plan, it really fits together nicely as we look at potentially doing something at the middle school, as we look at future programming needs at the high school, how they evolve. But I think there's some discussion that needs to take place on some of these other ones that maybe we're not clear on because they may evolve into a goal as well. Jim, Judy, Paul, Ed, or Wendy, do you have any comments from our discussion?
No, other than the Continuous Improvement Framework, we work towards six teaching and learning principles. It'd probably be a good way to report out the data of how we accomplish each one of those principles that drive our overall work, which would allow it to be spread out in better chunks for you, so that's one way to consider it.
Okay, regarding the first fiscal goal. Alan and Linda, you were, you helped to create that goal with Ms. Milzer. So the administration believes that's not a goal. It's a policy. So what are your feelings on that? And then the board together, the board, if we feel this is a goal, we can say it's a goal or fix it to make it a goal, so. Do we have questions as?
Well, I agree. Are you talking about the fund balancing? That's clearly that's, we took care of that.
We just did that.
Yeah, that's done. So we're not talking about that, Claire?
Well, I just wanted to know if you had any more comments on it, because, if you thought it had to go any further? Or you think it's closed? Okay, so that's, so that's off the list, okay.
I still think, though, that we have some room to go on reporting that's meaningful. Would you agree?
I agree. You're talking about the second part?
Correct, second part.
Yes.
And I thought that, Jim, you kind of were kind of on board to a certain extent. I mean, we don't wanna overburden you, but we need some context and some kind of, as Alan had always said, some relation to the budget in a way that we understand. And it would only make the board stronger and in working with the administration to allocate resources that matter. So I think it's an important goal.
I think the reporting that we do monthly is at the same level as the budget is adopted, so I think that's appropriate. And I thought that it would be, and we reported this out that night, but we really didn't have any discussion on it. And I thought it might be something that the other board members might wanna weigh in on, because this would probably be the fourth or fifth year we've had this as a goal. And I thought we had made all the changes that we needed to make, at least at this point, on these. We've made the budget document. at this point, on these. We've, we've made the budget document include a lot of explanation, pages and pages of explanation, as well as facts and figures to go along with it. And then each month, we provide the board the report showing where we are in the budget based on that month, as well as the, the list of every check that we've sent out for expenditure. So, I think I, I thought we had it covered, but you two had some points, you know, that you, you wanted to make on that. And I, I just thought it was something that the rest of the board would, would want to consider as to whether they wanted it as a goal or not.
From my standpoint, again, what, what we get as a budget, what that looks like, and what we get on a monthly basis, and what that looks like, there's just no comparison. And without comparison, how do you know where you really are? In the budget, we had this past year, I think it was a million dollars, I'm speaking off the top of my head, so I could be wrong, a million dollars for technological improvements. And when you look at what the report is that we get on a monthly basis, I am hard-pressed to point out where that money, if any of it, has been spent at, to date. And it's, and it's a million dollars. And that, that's why I, I'm saying, that's significant. And I can't see what's happening, whether it's monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, to make some comparison to the budget.
And I'm not sure how I would show you that by giving you numbers because they aren't even all in the same place in the budget. That would have to be a report saying, on the technology side, here's where we are.
But, but how do you put together the budget, then? If, if, if you're putting together a budget that doesn't reflect anything close to what your general ledger is, is projecting, how, how do you, how do you put it all together? Where, where are you getting the information from? You have two, two sets of books. One, the way you put together a, a budget, and the other one, how you actually keep track of what's going on?
No, but at the level of detail that you're talking about, I would have to give you 10,000 accounts.
No.
Yeah.
You could put together-
To get that level of detail, that's what I would have to give you. So, what you're, what you might really be looking for is if technology is, is an interest that the board has, and you'd like to know of the technology plan, what part have we done so far? You know, I think Luanne could put together a report, maybe a couple of times a year, not monthly, I don't think, saying, here's where we are. We did, we did this piece of it, we have this yet to go, and then by the end of the year, we got that done. That's, that's different, that would be different, and maybe that's the information you're really looking for, rather than how much did we spend every month on computers or whatever.
And, and not necessarily every month, but, and this year, it might be technology, but what's it going to be in this, in this next budget? What's the million-dollar bud- item in the next budget that, we had to get some detail on it. We didn't know what's going on there.
We talked about putting more detail into the budget document so you'd know what we were, what we were looking at doing. Like, you, you see the technology plan as an example, and, and you see all the other pieces of that. And one of the things we talked about that we would include in this year's budget would be a list of what those might be, so that you'd know more of the detail on what's being purchased this year. What's the, you know, is it computers? Is it something else? Is it smart boards? Where, where are those funds being spent, I guess?
And that's really how the budget is formulated. For example, technology being the case, Jim and I and Luanne sit down, and she has her list of all the technology needs she has, whether it's computers or whatever it might be. And it's gone through, and we take a look at that final dollar mouth, and that's, that's the budget, you know, for that particular area. So, when you say a million dollars as an example, we're able to say, and, and we monitor daily, to be able to say, that million dollars is being spent this way because that's the way it was budgeted. Now, we might have spent 700,000 of that in August, June, July, or July and August to get the school year going, but then it might not be requiring us to do additional things until later on. So, and in the check registry, you'd see payments to all the technology people, you know, all of our vendors are. So.
We do see actuals on an annual basis. In the budget document.
I guess if the question is monitoring it, that's what we do. That's, that's our rule, is to monitor it on a frequent basis. And Jim and-
Does the board have any fiduciary responsibility?
To approve the budget.
To monitor the budget?
Not to monitor the budget, no. I don't think so.
One of the questions that we had on the list of things, how well do we do whatever? And it said, monitor the budget. And I was one of the people who marked that very low because I said, we do not monitor the budget. We, we, we get reports, but that does not help us monitor what's going on. It's, I want to say, this is more along the lines of trust but verify. And we have no verification.
Well, but you do have verification because each month, we're bringing to you what we're spending. And I think Tim, way back when, said, the board looks at this from a 10,000-foot view, we look at it from a six-inch view on a daily basis. And it is the board's role to be able to, when we approve the budget, to be able to know that in technology, we're spending this and so on and so forth. And then that role falls back on us. That's what we're hired to do, to make sure that we spend those dollars in the right place at the right time. We don't go over budget. We get, we meet the needs that we have in our district and so on. And I think we do that pretty well.
That's why you have 18 million dollars of fund balance.
Pardon me?
I still don't think we are where we need to be or where we could be in financial reporting. I mean, like I said, I work in this field. We can do better. We want to do better? I don't know. It's up to you guys, I guess. But we can do better. And I don't say we have to go every month. There's, there's a, there's a happy medium here, but we have not, you know, looking at the check register, come on. What context is that in terms of reviewing? Compared to what? Check register, you know, you guys don't look at a check register. Just be honest, you don't. Why don't you look at it? Because you trust them or because you had no value from it?
Who are you speaking to that doesn't look at it?
Oh, okay. Does anybody?
I don't get it.
And if you saw ever, everything was perfect all the time. You understood every check that was written and?
Everything, yeah, you, you can't tell that everything ties out and we're spending in according to the way we said we would spend.
And that check register is every check. It's not, it can be the recreation fund, it can be the food fund, it can be the general fund. Any check was written for any purpose in the, and we have funds, right? We have a general fund, we have, doesn't even identify what fund it's coming from.
But you, you get a report on the funds. You get a report on the funds that we agreed on, what the budget was, what was spent that month, what was spent that year, the amount and the percentage. That's monitoring the budget, as a board's supposed to monitor the budget. You approve the budget at that level, you monitor it at that level. You don't say, gee, you said you were going to buy a thumbtack, but I don't see it in here. You know, you bought a pencil instead. That's not the way it works.
I don't think we ever asked those questions, Jim. But if you give us a check, a list of checks, we've got to, we've got to ask, who was this for? Because that's all we have. I don't think I've ever asked if you bought a thumbtack or not.
I think the other part of the monitoring process, which is probably more important than any of us, is the auditing process. You know, when our auditors come through and go through our books and so on and so forth, it's, it's a pretty substantial event. And I think that also validates what we do from a budget standpoint because, all of you that are in financial know the value of auditors. They, they catch something if it's not supposed to be there. From the operational end of it, on our end, if something doesn't get done in this district, because we didn't do something in the budget, we pay for it. And we don't have any intent of that happening, and it, and it has not happened.
And I agree, but I don't know that that, I mean, just to jump in, I don't know that that would preclude the board from being able to view some of the things that Ellen and Linda are talking about. And I don't have the answers as to what they're all looking for, but.
I guess that's what I would ask, is how many board members want more information and want the level of information that Mrs. Witkowski and Mr. Alexandrovitz are looking for? Or how many board members actually feel that they do have enough information or are comfortable with what, with the way things are reported currently?
I guess I would like to know, you know, if the reports that we have aren't what you need, what you need, what, what do you, what suggestions do you have of what you really want? I mean, I mean, if you really, I know that the reports have been changed a few times. So, if they still aren't correct, if, if you don't need those reports, do you have concrete suggestions as to what you, what you want? Is it something more simplified? Is it, what do you want?
I'd like to see something that when, if I open up the budget and I lay it out and I open up the monthly, quarterly report, that I can kind of run down and compare things.
And now, actually, these, these, these little things here, that actually does correspond to the budget, but they're, they're kind of abbreviated and you really couldn't tell. But if you actually looked at this, this number is, you could tie it to something in the budget document.
You could.
Like, undifferentiated, what is that really?
Right, these are-
Undifferentiated, which is 12 million.
Public construction-
Point out the, the million dollars, how we're doing on that, on, on the technology spending.
That would be, let me guess.
Exactly, guess.
That's 8.9 million dollars?
In the budget document-
Looking for a million.
You wouldn't see that by itself either, though.
Let's roll up into business administration. I mean, I guess, we could-
The titles in there are, are the DPI titles. Now, the board wanted to change those a few years back, and we changed them when I give you your budget documents, so it's a little easier to understand. But on the report from the software, they're still the way DPI has them labeled.
Okay, can it be pulled out of the DPI way of presenting the information more towards the way we're presenting the budget? Because I think the board, prior boards wanted it, other descriptions, so that, it, it was more of a, a layman's report, something they could read without feeling you had to be a CPA. And, and that's what I'm saying. The way the budget is laid out is, is pretty easy to understand and, and, and read through and have a, have a comfort level of what's happening. But when I get the monthly reports, I don't feel that same comfort level.
I could see if we could change the titles to the things that we changed them to on our, our budget documents that we approve in, within the software, and see if I can match that title rather than DPI's title. And then maybe it would be obvious that it does line up to the budget document.
Okay. Well, what would that cost?
I don't know. I don't know if it's possible, but I have to find out.
Okay. Because, because I'm really not looking to, to have, have a lot of expenditure to, to, to put together these, these reports. I'm, I'm hoping it's something that could be, of the reports that you get, what could you summarize into a spreadsheet to say, here? I, I, I think that this would help you. And filling out spreadsheets, once you've developed it and you're grabbing the numbers from wherever you're getting them from, that goes pretty quick.
Takes long enough to put this together and get it in the format for the board and upload it into board docs now. I mean, it does take a while. It, it's not the touch of a button technology thing.
I understand. On a monthly basis, I put together 52 pages for people at work in four days. So, it can be done. You do have to organize, and you do have to set up processes to make it happen.
Yeah, I'm just saying that as things are laid out, we have a lot of other things to do, not, but it can't be done. But if it would help on changing those names to try and mirror what we've called them in the budget document, I can look at doing that, then it would be part of the software itself. Then we wouldn't have to spend any time working with the software once it was set up.
Does this convert to Excel? Can you just download this? It's a report, it says end of report, so it is a report. Can you just export to Excel? I mean, most software nowadays, you can export to Excel.
But it would have the same names, though.
Well, I understand, but once you do that, I can manipulate it then, to do what I want to do with it and be done with it.
I think that, that'd be part of the key, is to try-
And I could just do it for me and I'd be done.
That'd be part of the key. If there's a way of doing like a data dump or something, that would be, would allow you and Alan to manipulate this stuff in, in ways that you can look at it, that would be easy for Jim to do. Because that was one of the underlying tenets that we also had. We didn't want to add extra, a lot of extra time. You know, we wanted to see what can you do from an export standpoint to say, okay, here's, here's what I got. I, I don't know if the check register are, is, I mean, the checks would be coded to, to expenditure accounts. I don't know if that'd be a way of tying that in on the register. You have the name who it goes to, the amount, and then what it relates to. I don't know how your system-
Which I'd have to begin with, and it wouldn't do that. That's, that one didn't work.
I just feel like, instead of spending all of this time discussing this, I think we need to find out if this is something everybody on this board wants. Because I think you just said something very significant, Mrs. Witkowski. You said, well, if you do this, it would help me. But is it going to help the rest of us? And I think before we ask Mr. Millsor to do more work and add to the other things that he already has to do, I think it has to be something that we, as a board, all agree that, yeah, this is going to help all of us. This is something we would all like.
I, I would like to take some of the same information and just manipulate it and bring it back to the board or something. And you can decide that.
Didn't we not ask you to do that once before, though? I think you did something like that before.
It wasn't the these reports, though. I think it was a budget document. It wasn't these.
Yeah, it was a budget document, because I put it together.
No, I think prior to your arrival on the board, we had, Mrs. Witkowski had, had made the same request, and she, she had taken a document and redid it for us, or did some work on it. But I just think that this is something that we, as a whole board, need to be in agreement on. I just don't think that, as a lone board member, two board members, we can direct one person to go and spend countless hours doing another report that maybe the majority, and I don't know, maybe the majority of the board does not really have an interest in. Maybe the majority of the board is comfortable with the way things are presented. I don't know. But I feel like we're just spinning our wheels here right now.
I think we may be in a better position to answer that if we have an idea of what some of the other schedules and documents might look like.
Yeah.
So, if you'd want-
Can we table this until we have?
Oh, yeah. I don't think we're going to get that answered tonight, but I think if you were to, because I was trying to figure out how do we turn this into a goal? And it's really more something like, well, here's kind of what we're thinking about getting, and then you'd have to find out if that's all we can do. So, yeah, I think we have to circle back to this.
Right. And Alan and I could work on this together, if the board's okay with that.
You still have your committee. It hasn't been dismant, disbanded.
You have a committee?
Your little-
Oh.
Your little financial committee, the two of you.
All right. But I think it should still stay on here. You're right, we need to make it a, some kind of, do something with this.
Well, we need to see if it's a, if it is an actual goal that the board wants as a whole.
Right. I understand. But we need some time to get together. Because you're right, we need, you guys need to kind of know what you're approving, what you're buying into, and, and that makes sense.
So, then you'll, you'll let me know when you're ready to report back to us?
Are we going to do another retreat, though, or, or fingers?
I, I think you can report back to us on, we can have another goal, just a little meeting right here, just on this one goal.
Oh, okay.
Just with your report, so we could see if we want to continue with this, this goal.
Okay.
Unless we do end this tonight, saying, you know, we, we have to go through these other ones quickly and see if we're going to have a retreat. So, so let's see where we go on this. Okay. The next was annually employ and retain high-quality staff who perform at a proficient level. The administration believes this is not really a board goal, but operational. Did you have anything to add to that, Dr. Pass, besides what, besides that? Uh, did you have anything to add to that, Dr. Pass, besides what, besides that?
No, just that, you know, we, we have the function of employing people. We interview employee, interview and select people, and we do the staff evaluations. So, uh, we didn't felt that fit into the, the definition of a board goal. But we did talk about, um, you know, the reporting process in terms of Judy's personnel report, and that was brought up by the board at the retreat.
One thing I think that might be useful, because you list names, but if you had like a cumulative count over the period of a year, I think that would be useful to know, now we had six retired or two. Because now we just, it's month to month, and again, you don't-
Sure. You know, I certainly appreciate that, you know, you want to know what kind of impact some of the decisions you're making have on our employees. So, um, certainly I, I will bring to you information about why people are leaving this district. I think that that's good for you to have. With regard to their proficiency levels, you know, unfortunately you do hear about those that are nonperformers, because I come to you and tell you that we need to not continue to employ them. You know, we have some level of recognition for our employees. We used to have teacher of the year for the high-performing employees. You know, we're working on that. We, we want to be really careful about who we're recognizing and why. And then as part of the comp model, we plan to develop that area where people will receive additional pay for exceptional performance. But that's going to require some time, as I mentioned, because what does it mean to be an exceptional food service employee? What does it mean to be an exceptional custodian? All of that has to be defined. I need more time. But you will hear about those people. You will know who they are, and I'll be asking you for money to reward that kind of performance. So, um, those are things that are just working, that I'm working through. But, you know, I, I do feel like I would like to share more information with you about, you know, what's happening with our employees and their decisions to work here. Because it, it does, it does relate to what's happening with board decisions, so. If you're okay with that, I think we could move forward with me just agreeing to do that.
I know one of my biggest challenges with this wasn't so much whether it was a goal or not, but how it was measurable. I think having a board goal, the fact that the board can't carry out that goal doesn't necessarily mean it's not a board goal. We can have a board goal that is for the district, for the administration, that we're setting a goal for the, just the administration to whatever.
I think another thing that would be important related to this would be for us to get into, at least maybe every other year, an employee satisfaction survey.
Sure.
I think that'd be very valuable. If it's structured properly, could be a valuable tool as far as coordinating with this.
Yeah, so some of this feedback doesn't maybe necessarily need to be included in the goal. It's a great topic of discussion, and giving that feedback's going to be helpful. But I just didn't want to dismiss the fact that this wasn't really a board goal as much as administrative or operational, but-
Well, maybe the goal is to establish some feedback mechanism to the board to identify employee impacts of our decisions. You know, what is that mechanism that we can know about? That could be the goal.
Which is something that she said-
That could be the goal.
That could be the goal, and then that's something they can put in together.
Right, right, absolutely. So I'm not quite sure how to word that. Just, you know, because the, the overall goal is the board is, of the board is to understand the impact of their decisions on employees. So, um, so I think your goal is to obtain more information regarding the impact of your decisions on employees. And then I can report out on why people are leaving, perhaps, as, as one, um, one method of giving you information about that. And then, as Dr. Pass said, as well, employee satisfaction surveys could also be, we did a customer service, you know, I, I can put some of those pieces together, but I, I think it, it sends a message that it's important to you, that you, you know, you care. You know how employees perceive the decisions you're making. So, I, I think it's a, a goal that, you know, I can certainly provide you information on.
And I think you have to be careful, when you talk about goals, for example, a goal related to this should be, the board wants to determine the impact of something. That's, that's the board goal. The board goal, to report out like you're talking about is not a board goal. That's a report. And then the other part of that is to be able to, for the board to phrase it in such a way that the board will, will, you know, accumulate information regarding making decisions of employee satisfaction or whatever.
I see.
You know, but there's, there's a difference between a board goal and a report, and they're, they're pretty distinct.
But this was, as if I remember correctly, this wasn't so much from taking from the angle of us trying to find out what our impacts are. It was more, as it's written, annually employ and retain high-quality staff who perform at a proficient level. That would be what our goal would be. But then trying to, but then all these other things would give us information as to, um, how do we go about achieving that goal? And that wouldn't be something that the board would necessarily do, but that would be a goal that we would set for, you know, the district.
Could you change it to, um, the board's? This is in smart language, but the board's decisions should allow us to employ and retain high-quality and, or the goal of the board's decisions is to allow us?
Yeah, someone's along those lines.
I, I kind of wonder about, you know, isn't this your goal this year, next year, and every year forward? It's like, what's unique about it? I, I think if you're going to set goals annually, they need to be something that you measure that's unique and you want to accomplish. I mean, what, what you have here is, you're essentially saying, Judy, do your job. You know, and I don't do it alone, of course. All the principals are involved and everyone else. So, um, I don't think we're quite there with writing a goal on this.
The only comment about what I would say is unique is we changed the comp model.
Right, so, but you're, you're tying it to the decisions of the board, but I'm hearing the board say, well, we don't necessarily want to write a goal about the impact of our decisions. So we, we haven't resolved this yet.
Yeah, and if I remember, we were picking from a list of categories, and this was what we, what we came up with. So that's what I'm saying, this was harder for me to get my arms around on a measurable goal.
Perhaps, you know, I can do what I suggested, which is provide you this kind of information. And then next year, you can see what that information tells you in order to write a goal in this area.
It could be something as simple as the board will use personnel data or whatever data you want to use for the purpose of making sound district decisions. That's it.
Again, every year that should happen, that's the same.
You don't have to change the goal then.
Yeah, but you have standing goals, and then you have, you know, what the vision is for the goal.
But that's no different than every year kids should grow. I mean, you put it on here to, what measures, well, get grows and changes and works.
Well, if we, so you're okay with the, the growth of the whole child goal, as it's written? Is that, am I hearing that right from the administration? Is that, that works? So we, if we use that same structure, we would say annually monitor the level of high-quality staff who perform at a proficient level, using indicators, using indicators of whatever those might be.
Yeah, putting the word monitor in there changes it, you know. That definitely changes it in, in terms of the board's role.
And it's, it's really, the way that's written is way too broad, because which child are you talking about? That, you know, that should be stated more specifically, annually, annually monitor the student achievement levels of, of the district or like, you know, the four-year, four-year-old, or not, four-year-old, fourth grade reading or whatever it might be. So you have to be more specific when you, when you do something like that. Because when you say annually monitor the growth of the whole child, all right, if I ask each of you, what's your definition of the whole child? What are you going to say? It's going to be different.
Well, we were talking about using the continuous improvement framework, which does have different areas, and then there are measures within those areas. I, I mean, this is jumping ahead, but I, I would almost like to see us define some just key measurements in those areas and maybe roll up the data somehow onto almost like a dashboard. And again, I don't want to cause anybody a lot of extra effort, but-
We do, we have.
But ideally, that would be a really easily, easy way to represent that data, and then the board could see it, and we could compare one year to the following year and, you know, compare what the differences are. I mean, that would be ideal, but I don't know how difficult that would be.
We do do that, so we, it's not, it's just Mike, like Steve shared earlier, we present it in a lump sum. We don't break it out by the, um, principles or indicators we work around. You just see the full picture. So it's, it's already done. It's not a, anything different that we'd have to do. It's, it's just to Steve's point, it's-
You just have to put it all in one place. When you say dashboard, then it's like one sheet or one easy, easy piece to see. And it's in multiple, it's on one site, but it's in multiple different clicks to get to it. So we have to, we have to compile it to make it one sheet or one, one easier way to see it.
And just design it so the data's available to share that report? Because sometimes it's not contingent on us, it's a state report or when the appropriate time to get the data.
So regarding the annually employ and retain, um, do we want to?
I don't know if there's really a goal there that can be figured out. I think where we are right now with getting some of that feedback, I think is-
Delete the goal?
Well, how about annually monitor the retention of high-quality staff who perform at a proficient, proficient level, using performance indicators as identified by administration? Which is exactly what you kind of said you would be looking at. We, and we would look to you to see what works.
Well, educator effectiveness.
Well, we also want to, you know, high quali, retain is also a keyword here.
Right, 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 right. So annually monitor-
The retention.
Retention of high-quality-
And employment, I guess you could say retention and employment of high-quality staff.
Retention. And employment, I mean, they're, they are.
I'm not sure if that adds a lot, but-
And of high-quality staff, um, using performance indicators as determined by-
Is the goal really to annually monitor that? Or is the goal, or is our goal really to develop something that will help us annually monitor what we're talking about? Suppose we're trying to figure our way through this to have Judy put together something that will allow us to monitor that. The goal is, as we're kind of going through this now, is maybe to create a mechanism that will allow us to annually monitor.
I think you're getting all of this already, but we can do a better job of breaking it out and refining it and, you know, sort of putting in a little bit better silos, because it's not a board goal to monitor the progress of the whole child. How, how are you going to do that unless you come to the schools every day? You know, the goal is what, what is your, what are you specifically going to do as a board? And for example, when you say monitor, that would tell me that you want to monitor data. And so that's what we present to you through reporting method.
Well, what I'm saying is we're getting a little more pointed now by saying we're, we're, our board goal would be to create a mechanism that will allow the monitoring in, in employ and retain high-quality staff. So, no, we won't be doing that, but that would be the board goal to have this district or the administration come up with a mechanism that would do that monitoring. And I think Judy has all of that, it's just a matter of putting that together, right? You know what I'm talking about?
I do have. But the board won't create the mechanisms. The board won't create the mechanisms. So if you write it as your goal, you know, we'll-
But I think in the workshop, it wasn't necessarily us doing the work. It was also involving the administration, correct? So it doesn't have to be what we are necessarily physically doing. It's, we can direct and ask and, right?
Right.
I agree. And that's what my first comment was, I don't think a board goal has to be something that just the board does.
I guess I'm just more comfortable with it starting with monitor retention of high-quality staff. You know, I think that's clean. And let us figure out what mechanisms and all that stuff. If you, you know, I think it's appropriate for the board to monitor that. And I'll have to come to you.
Do you keep it annually, though, or?
Yeah. Got it.
But I agree with what you said, we wouldn't do the monitoring.
No.
I understand, I agree. We wouldn't do the monitoring. We're just developing the goal to create something to do the monitoring.
Well, you inherently already do the monitoring, because when we make reports to you, then in a sense, you're monitoring what we tell you.
That's right.
The, the report card, test scores, whatever we, you know, someone will present to you.
I don't know how much that is a function of us really monitoring anything, just getting information.
Well, what would you react to it if there was something you saw that you didn't? I mean, you must sort of have certain expectations of what you expected to see. There might be benchmarks that could be added to the report.
That's true.
That they could.
That is true.
So then the, we're okay with the way the annual, annually monitor growth of the whole child uh, goal is written? There was no issue with that one?
We thought it was okay. We could tweak it a little bit and-
And then the final goal, that was fine with everyone?
That one was outstanding.
Yes.
I'm not sure about how you're defining programming, though.
Pardon me?
How are you defining programming, though? Is that curriculum or is it broader than that? What are you, how are you defining programming? I'm a little confused by that.
Well, programming is, is literally the programs, like pathways, for example.
So it's curriculum?
Well, curriculum is built into that. Yeah, it would be like, uh, first robotics would be another one. You know, anything that we do in terms of an overview of, of what students are doing, then the curriculum is sort of the, what goes into making that program successful and run and function.
Who's developing this three-year strategic facility and programming plan?
That's what that work team would do.
The board administration community work team.
And what do you mean by community engagement? What activities is, or who's deciding?
Well, it's bringing the community in to make sure, number one, they're aware of what we have in terms of facilities, what we have in terms of programming. You know, part of the strategic, which you all know, I'm not a big fan of that word, but it's bringing people in to say, okay, what do you expect for programming for our kids? Because you could talk to parents of younger children right now that might be out there in the business world that are really into technology or whatever it might be, and they would say, we want these kinds of programs in our schools. And they might be dramatically different than what we already have. That's why we're always trying to stay ahead of the game. You know, you've heard a number of times when you talk about 21st century learning, it's, it's changed from the way we all went to school. And it's different, and the programming is very different.
Well, I, I agree that the change that's happening, you know, we're probably leaving our community behind a little bit in some, some aspects if you haven't been in the school building.
I think the key is that last part there, to develop action steps and then measure the progress, you know, to be able, okay, if that's a goal, fine. But now we got to say, how are we going to go about doing this, those action steps?
And you would also include measurement against community engagement? Is that your intent, that you would? How do you know that we're reaching the community? How do we know that we're hearing what they're telling us? Is that-
You provide opportunities.
And that, we haven't decided that yet. That's sort of something yet that we would need to determine with that, um-
The team.
The team. That would be part of the team's role, is determining those kinds of things.
Measurement against that.
You know, how are we going to measure it? What kinds of things are we going to do to engage the community? Will we do world cafes? Will we hold open houses? Will we hold listening sessions? I mean, that's something that the team itself needs to get together and decide on before we could, before we would implement anything. And then obviously, then we would also come to the board. The team would come to the board and say, here's our ideas. This is what we're planning. On this date, we're going to do this, you know. That's our plan. What do you think? How do you feel about that?
But the measurement wouldn't, wouldn't just be against a, um, a facilities plan. It'll be against community engagement also. There'd be some measurement of community engagement. Is that the intent?
For me, right now, I couldn't tell you if that was the intent or how we would measure it, because I would have to meet with the team and make that decision. I think, I think the team, when that, once that team is assembled, you need to have that opportunity to have that discussion. And you have to remember that, just like with the other goals, I mean, we found out one goal isn't really a goal, and then we come down to this goal, you know. We were kind of, for lack of a better term, we were spitballing there at first. We were, you know, tied to a certain amount of time, and we were just throwing out ideas. So you'd actually have to get a team together and say, okay, here's our plan. This is our vision. And then that team would certainly be able to present to the board and say, okay, we, we've taken this goal, here's our vision.
Okay, fine. Would we like to attempt to set another board retreat now? Or would, like we did last time, try to throw some dates out there? Does, does anyone have a calendar with them right now? Hopefully if we set one more retreat, we can put these goals out there, finalize them, and then decide how we want to proceed. Do we all have a calendar? No? Okay. Then how about if we try to decide on our month? And then put some, uh, if Dr. Pats and I want to put some dates out there? And then we, we can, uh, email back to Dr. Pats whether they're good or not. Do we want to try for June or July or?
I can just tell you just, and this is just an opinion. Traditionally, when we've reached this point in the year, everybody's starting to plan vacations and so on and so forth. And our best time really, I think, might be to look at from mid to late August. Because it could roll into the start of the school year, vacations are generally done. Quite honestly, I'd like to start school August first because most of the parents want to get rid of their kids and, and, you know. But people really are, they shift a mode. When, when August rolls around, there's that mode of, okay, summer's over with, now we can start getting back to business. So that's not necessarily the suggestion. I, I think it works okay. Because we've got a lot going on here throughout the summer that really occupies a lot of our time.
So if we want to look for another night, a nighttime one like we did last time? How about if we start by emailing Dr. Pats for August? When you can't, like if you're on a vacation during August, why don't you start with that? How about that?
Could I maybe flip it around? How about if I send you like five dates?
Okay.
And then you guys tell me what works and what doesn't work. Otherwise we're herding cats.
Well, I just figured if someone had a vacation, that, that knocks out a whole week. But, uh.
Are we down to just this last one though, that we're trying to set up? Develop this third, I mean, if.
No, we would, we would be meeting on all these right now.
That's what I'm saying. But the first one is taken care of through a policy discussion tonight. The second one, Alan alone, they're getting, putting something together. The third one Judy's working on. And I don't think we ever really had a resolution to this whole child one. I'm not really sure if that's something that we're pursuing or not. So we're down to this, uh, three-year strategic facility planning, so I don't know.
So we might be, well, we have to have steps under these goals.
Oh, so that's what we're going to develop.
Yes, you have, you have to create some steps under the goals. And then perhaps Linda and Alan might come back to us at another board meeting about this other one. So we decide if we're going to have a goal before August.
So we're going to get an email from Steve on five dates in August.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. Then our next item, uh, curriculum presentation recap. At our last board meeting, right after the curriculum presentation, uh, it was said that there might be a few questions or comments about that curriculum presentation. It was a great presentation. So I know, um, Mr. Alexandrovich said he had quite a few questions. I think Mrs. Bukowski had some questions. I did have one question that got out, did get answered, but I might come up with a couple, I don't know, does any, Mr. Alexandrovich, did you want to start?
No. The sheet of paper that I had written all my questions on, I didn't grab it before I left the house.
Oh, my goodness.
Didn't go through the washing machine. It just didn't make it.
Okay, you don't remember any of them, huh?
No.
This is Bukowski.
Well, I guess in looking at the social studies, um, changes, the, going to the themes, you're going to themes instead of, um, chronological, is that, would that be correct? In teaching? I guess I want to know how that, how that works. Because I guess, you know, I remember that there used to be certain grade we would do Wisconsin history. Does anybody remember that? Wasn't there a certain grade where all you did was, what happens to that?
We still do Wisconsin in fourth grade. That's a statute, that's a requirement. So, um, when we learned social studies, it was important to memorize facts because there was very few ways to get them or readily accessible ways to get them. And now you, for lack of a better term, can Google it. So it's about applying the learning to life, um, experiences. So you become a quality citizen. So memorizing a bunch of wars or the famous people within the wars doesn't necessarily develop a quality citizen. And that's the goal of, of our social studies curriculum. So how can you apply the learning to make good decisions for yourself, your community, um, and the, and the people in your world? So that's the shift. It's, it's around, um, when, when you think of, um, blooms and they talk about the, the levels at which you work. Social studies used to be very much all about recall and memorization. And now it's about moving in Franklin, we say above the red line where you're inferring and you're analyzing and you're applying and you're creating with the information. So i- it's really a higher level of expectation of what you do with the learning versus what you memorize. Um, there is a certain amount of recall and memorization that has to occur. Because if you don't know that we're made up of 50 states, you can't use that information. So there is within, there is a whole content base to the curriculum. It's just not the focus of the curriculum. So students still do learn pertinent facts that are important. But then it's about what they do and apply with those facts.
Right, so as, as a parent, you know, um, how do I know what that content is? I mean, because there's no book, right? There's no book.
No, there is a.
I know you did reference something about some titles as outlined in the teacher's edition. I never was able to get that link to work. But, you know, as a, as a parent, you know, my child's taking social studies, how do I know?
Just like any area, we have very few student textbooks any longer. The goal, once all areas got through review, which they have now with art is pretty much through review. We're just waiting for a final curriculum document. Is Eclipse, which is our district curriculum mapper, list all the units and when they're taught and the time they're delivered and how long they're delivered. And that will become visible to the public, that will.
Will become or is, is?
Will become. It was not a completed document because it's been in the works over the years. And we wanted to assure that it had some commonalities and qualities. And it was a learning curve for the teachers because it's all digital. So that is just about complete. And so portions of that, some of it won't ever become visible because it's the assessments and the work the teachers use. But enough so the parents understand. And the expectation, you will see Google sites in many of the areas now that tell parents more information than they've ever had about what their child needs to learn and when. So you, you'll, there's different ways to, to communicate. It's just not, you don't get a textbook at home that you can look through and see what's coming up.
Can we maybe have a little presentation on Eclipse and what that looks like and how you access it? It means it, you're saying it wasn't built for this, but do we use it in other curriculum areas?
We use it in all curriculum areas. We've brought it to the board before over time. It's been in the district for four or five years now. It's not a new tool. Um, it's a behind-the-scenes tool, but yeah, we're happy to show it to you. And, um, we'll have hundred, hundred and some teachers in it as soon as school gets out, looking at their assessment plans and organizing themselves. So it is, it's a tool that's out there.
I can click on it now on the website or, or not?
I, we don't have it live on our website. No, the teachers all access it right now. But yes, when it goes, when we get that up and running and live, we'll happily.
Because that's the content, you're saying, really? That's content, curriculum content that we.
Right. We'll, we'll bring it up to Alan. He's our, um, new curriculum representative when he reviews our reports. And he can, um, help us decide where it, where it fits and where.
Sure, no problem.
He'll run it for you too. We'll have him schooled up and ready to go.
And I guess some of the, uh, changes in the health and physical education, um, and how exactly is that going to be implemented? Like the, the brain, what's it called, the brain break? And, um, do teachers have to accommodate the brain breaks now or how's that happen?
Well, sure, yes. And, um, the, it was piloted this year at Pleasant View. And Sue Mishler put a presentation together and shared it at a staff meeting and talked about the importance and the relevance and how it will assist them in being better students. And the idea is it's, it's seamless work. That you, you should, when a transition time is appropriate, incorporate an appropriate brain break. And the teachers will have a pool to choose from and use what's appropriate. So it's not anything, um, that takes a great deal of time. It's just a matter of where, I've, I've watched teachers do it at Pleasant View. You don't really know it's, you wouldn't call it a brain break. You would just think, oh, they're moving a little to get ready to do their next activity. The teacher just kind of naturally incorporates it in.
And this is probably maybe done in the past too? Different teachers had different ways of transitioning.
I just don't think it had a formal name and it didn't have research to speak of the importance.
My daughter had a Zumba instructor as a teacher. And they took five minutes between switching from math to social studies and did a five-minute little Zumba dance. And that was, it was really good. Maybe not five minutes, maybe it was like a three-minute song, but it, it worked. Just an example.
Well, even that simple one that what Mr. Campbell did with your hands, which I could not coordinate, I might add. But I mean, even doing that, you know, five minutes before going to lunch, you just say, you, you say to the kids, stand up, let's do this. I mean, it's just, it kind of comes naturally if you're in the classroom. You know when those kids need that, you know when to give them that break and you can just do it. And it's, it's seamless.
I do have a question about the integration of literacy and social studies. I like the making the connections, you're not teaching it, but you're ma- having to make those connections, which I think makes them a better student. But I've heard that some teachers don't want to do that or don't like that. They don't feel that, they, they think there should be this and this, they shouldn't be integrating.
Right. All, all the, the real, when you hear us talk about personalized learning, personalized learning makes work relevant, makes learning relevant for students. And relevancy doesn't come in silos. We don't work in silos. When you think of all you talked about tonight, you talked about, you incorporated all you know from many content areas into all of your discussions. And students will achieve and excel at their highest level when they own their learning and they're committed versus complying. And the, the way to do that is for them to see those connections. So it's easier to silo because it, you know you cover it and you know how to cover it with that out-of-context learning. But it's not relevant to the real world. And that's why students don't tend to always accomplish at those high levels. So the expe- the teachers, um, haven't even been presented the full social studies realm and how it's going to be done. And honestly, when those decisions are made, it's not my decision. That's the will of the group and their, their request to integrate it. Because time is of the essence and work is more complex. So some people probably don't have the skill set. And it's not something that can happen overnight because you have to understand the social studies curriculum before you can integrate it. So that's always natural anxiety around changes and shifts. So I, I, I'm not worried about that. You hear, you hear people have concerns. But when they're supported and it's going to happen over a two or three-year period, um, I don't think you'll see that. One of the first things I ever did when I arrived in Franklin was the kindergarten teachers came to me and said, can we please integrate social studies into reading? And I said, um, sure, do you have a plan? Yes, we need this amount of time and this work, and this is what we'll do, and this is how we'll make it happen. And they came forward one day and it was a fabulous product and a very integrated approach. So it really is something, the people you hear saying that probably don't have the, the understanding yet of how it'll happen and how their colleagues will assist them in doing it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Okay, some of, I went off to the thing and tried to clue up some of the questions that I had. And in the health area, is that where sex education is taught? I saw, and I don't remember much being said about that at all.
Human growth and development, I sent you that full report that the, um, by statute, we're required to gather a subcommittee of district and community representatives and determine our practices around human growth and development. And I sent you all that report that the committee agreed to. And it basically outlined the do's and don'ts and the hows and whens in Franklin. So it's very specific of what we cover and how parents are communicated with and how students can choose to opt out or opt in and when we cover it. And it's all around developmentally appropriate times. So that, that's why we didn't cover it that night because we sent the extensive report from the committee work. And it's in the executive summary with an attachment to all of it. So that was the only reason we didn't go over it in detail. It was sent earlier.
And I noticed that when they're doing the, uh, surveys, that the kids don't seem to like the topics of like drugs and tobacco.
Right, I'm not sure which part of the.
Oh, there was a middle school and high school.
Well, probably.
Surveys, you know, what, what did they like? They liked talking about, uh, uh, here's, topics that are most important to these students were nutrition, fitness, and dealing with stress. Least favorite, H and G D.
Human growth and development.
Yeah, tobacco use in relationships.
Right. At middle school level.
That, that was high school.
High school?
Yeah.
I, I think it's, um, relevance and avoidance. So is it relevant to them? For some kids it's not because they don't partake. And for some of them, they prefer to avoid dealing with human growth and development or drugs and alcohol because it might be hitting a sensitive nerve.
Okay, but, but we still go after it.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Anything else? Is there a course description of breaking the rules? How, and I, you know, it's like this is kind of this new class is, you didn't, they didn't seem to take ownership of it. And then, so how does that fit?
A car- for social studies, you're speaking, speaking out.
Breaking the rules, how individual figures have changed, so.
The, um, I just, at the end of the report, I thought we put all the course descriptions.
Not that one, because they, I got the impression that wasn't there. Is that the other program?
Oh, um, breaking the rules, right, that's, that's a part of inroads that.
Who owns this class then, you know? You got them saying it's them and they got.
That, that's actually an integrated class. It's owned by English and social studies combined. So it's, um, you know, if I can find it, I just don't have it docked up right now. But it's, um, it's, it's social studies and inroads, I mean, social studies and English are creating it together. And they're using, um, the ninth-grade social studies standards that they would use in the regular nine, any ninth-grade social studies course. And then the disciplinary literacy standards that are part of the Common Core state standards is, is what English is using for their portion. As well as any English Common Core literacy.
So then is that two credits then, or is it?
No, it's one credit. For, for that course, it's just a, it's just an integrated course.
Okay. I just want to know about swimming also. Do we teach swimming? I know you said it was an elective or? I mean.
All, all FIAED courses, FIAED, students are required to take one point, one and a half credits of high school. We offer multiple choices. So all of them are electives. They're required to accrue FIAED credit, but how they do that is the choice of theirs. Unless guidance or, um, administration or parents would have some reason to insist a ti- child take a certain course. Health is required, point five credits of health, but they choose, um, one credit in the offering.
I guess my question would be, can the average person, citizen, make the assumption that if you get out of high school, you know how to swim?
No.
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 It's part of a ninth grade, if you take ninth grade FIAED, there's a unit on swimming.
But we cannot make the assumption that they.
No, we don't teach to the standard, we don't, that's not a standard.
It's not a standard?
No.
I don't think it is anywhere.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Just curious because I, I think that was kind of a.
You can also take it through team sports or individual sports. Swimming is, is parts of other class, PE classes.
It's integrated in, but you might not come, become an expert swimmer. You get, acquire some skill.
Be, be safe around water, I guess would be. Okay. And I did ask about whether they would get credit for sport? And you.
At this point, we, we do that on an individual basis. We don't have an, um, so if, if there's a situation where a student can't take FIAED for some reason, we, we use that as an option, um, based on our philosophy that we want students to.
I kind of agree with it, but is it, is it the board's policy? I mean, you can give credit for that by your.
That's, that was.
Something we want to look at further because I think.
Something we want to look at further because I think there's value in in these kids being able to schedule their days because some of them get more physical activity in the sports that they're up for than they do in any FIAED class.
It's not our policy that we would.
No.
No, it's it's a sta- I mean, it's a sta- we can do it per statute. Now, there was a change.
But we have not revised our policy to allow for it.
Or allow for it. So we.
We're gonna look at it because I think it's it's something I want to look at very much.
The reason it's not, you have in some districts that came to the forefront instantly when the statute came was with our block schedule, our students could take so many courses. FIAED isn't in the FIAED requirement isn't impacting what they can take. But that's why we do case by case because to Dr. Pat's point, if a student cannot take other courses that they deem valuable for their career college life after they leave Franklin, we don't want to deter that. But in the other districts that came to the forefront and was put into practice earlier on and had we not moved to a block schedule, you would have seen that happen in Franklin because FIAED was definitely taking a FIAED credit was allowing them not to take other courses.
And it's not necessarily just a course or a course or a credit issue either. It's taking into consideration the student day, how long the days these kids kids put in and how much they have enough time to apply to their, for example, if they're in A P courses and so on and so forth. If and if they're up for band or if they're up for football or whatever it might be, the fact that they're spending time there and then taking a FIAED class and then doing this course is it's wear on on students. It's it it goes a little bit into the thinking of everybody talking about when students start their day. You know, you've all heard which high school kids shouldn't start till nine o'clock in the morning or whatever, just like that. You know, and there's you can look at all these things any way you want. But I I think the the FIAED credit for being participant in in athletics, I think it's it's a smart thing to do because there's still options. You don't have to do it. But if you're if you're putting that much time in because we have a high percentage of kids that are not involved in just one sport, they're involved in two or three sports. Well, if they can free up that time where they would have normally had a FIAED class to be taking either another class or to modify their time a little bit better to be, you know, more efficient and more proficient, I think we need to take a look at that.
I think that was something that surfaced with the inroads program because that that was an issue with with FIAED and having to get that 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 one.
And we we've offered offered for several years prior to the block when it was an issue and before the statute, we offered the option to take FIAED in the summer to alleviate that stress on the on the schedule. So that that was the off option and that's what we moved to with the inroads program, too.
Yeah, which which, you know, I think you're allowed like three absences. So if you there was a week vacation in there.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so that it's yeah, so I think that that's something worth looking at because that was one of the decisions that was weighed in by a number of students, I'm sure, whether they could get involved.
I I will tell you, the FIAED department won't look favorably on just a blanket approach of letting everybody opt out of FIAED because they believe their curriculum does teach sound skills that they want students exposed to. And I don't dispute at all that sports teach many, many things. I think there are things you can't measure certainly with standards that they teach. But the FIAED department didn't. We looked at that and they talked about it, but it didn't come forward on the review because their their a firm belief that that curriculum teaches skills that students need to be exposed to.
I would strongly argue against that because being in Texas and seeing how it's implemented there and the the skill level those kids are involved in extracurricular sports usually far exceeds what those kids are in a in a normal FIAED class.
Right, I I'm not. I'm sharing my opinion. I'm sharing the opinion of the department.
I did sense though, the staff is, you know, they they think this is great stuff and we need more of it, really. You could see that coming.
Well, and the kids, they're getting exposed to things other than, I mean, other than just the one sport they may be involved in. So I mean, there's definitely some benefits on the other side.
And there's a lot of variables, too. You could you could do it where you only did it for freshmen or juniors and seniors instead of freshmen and sophomores. It's a long ways off.
I was surprised that they focused on communication with parents, too, in some of their recommendations. There's a website now for.
Right. The the FIAED department firmly believes without the support of the family, they can only move their work so far because they understand that it has to be a collaborative approach.
And I do recall that there was a request, a grant request to the foundation to also expand.
Right. Our middle school doesn't have a a life fitness facility. And it's those what they discovered through the review, it's those activities that carry on throughout life. You know, running on the treadmill or learning how to use an eclipt, you know, elliptical or lifting free weights. And so their goal is to develop a facility like that at the middle school. And they knew that that wasn't something we could fund out of the budget. So they want to incorporate those lives, you know, life skills into their work. And so they're working with the foundation to they did receive part of the funding from the foundation. And their goal is to work with the foundation over time to continue to add to that area.
Do we have that equipment at the high school?
Um, some in in and would they have the the weight room and, you know, some of that. I don't know that they have treadmills at the high school. I can't speak to that. Yeah, they have a track, right.
Not anymore. Well, not right now.
Okay, any more questions?
Did you?
No, I had my answer. Okay. All right. We'll move on to item nine D, the National School Board Convention Reports. And Mrs. Klein, Mrs. Larson and myself and Dr. Pat's went to New Orleans for the National School Board Convention. And I I felt that this convention, I don't know how the others feel, but I felt it was very focused on students this year at a lot of the sessions I attended. Anyway, who would like to go first?
I will.
Okay.
Um, I will not bore you and read to you, I promise. I'll just give you a brief overview. I thought it was a very good convention. I really did. I I think my favorite session at the convention was the general session that Mrs. Evans and I attended together. And I would ask that you model the bracelet that we received there at that.
Oh.
The red one. Yes, indeed. Yes. We got to hear Magic Johnson and he was he was a fantastic speaker. I thought he was engaging and he was interesting to listen to and he added humor to his talk. And he's a great advocate for education, mostly urban education, but education itself. So he was just he was fantastic to listen to. And he struck me as such a nice man because people came right out of the audience as he was talking and walked up to him and they did selfies together. And, you know, he wasn't opposed to being approached by the people in the audience. I thought he was great. I went to several sessions on discipline policies, things like that. One session was called From School to the Prison Pipeline. It talked about board policy and practice impacting the school climate, student engagement, and then alternatives to disciplinary action that districts can take. Dr. Pat's and I think attended a session together called Oversight or Overstepping, how a board exercises that authority appropriately without micromanaging the district. That was very interesting. They tried to actually get everybody in this huge room to stand up and move in regard to whether you thought the scenario was overstepping or you were just doing oversight. But there was just no way to move more than, what, a hundred and fifty, two hundred people from one side of a room to another. So that did not last very long to do that activity. We or I attended a session called Creating a Successful Partnership Board and Superintendent Relations. And that was from the Red Clay School District. And they had a lot of handouts. They actually have like a district newspaper like this. I'll pass it around. And it talks about when school starts, when their open houses are. It's got all the phone numbers in it. It's a little bit like our opening doors, except I think it's a bigger version of what we do. So that was that was interesting. They also send out an annual report to their community. And this has just everything in it. It even thanks all of the volunteers that worked in the district for the year and talks about community engagement. Shows their building project of close and personal, yeah, how much the building project is costing, what the capital improvements are, district resources. So this is a really nice document to look at. Went to a lot of other sessions. Another one that was really good was engaging families and communities as an alternative to expulsion. And not that we would could do this in our district, but there is a district in South Carolina that actually has all their family intervention services right on site. It's at their district office, not at their high school or in their middle school or anything like that. They moved it offsite to their district office. So families that had issues such as behavior or it's just a whole multidisciplinary team. And they actually created a a set of offices with doctors and psychologists and psychiatrists where the people, the students and their families can come for therapy and support. And it's not in the school, so there's no stigma attached to them using those services. So I thought that was a really nice thing that they were doing in South Carolina. But I thought it was a great conference.
Thank you.
I agree. I thought it was a great conference. It was my first one, our first national conference. It's structured like the Wisconsin one, but it's much huger and the quality of the presenters were was very impressive. Some of the sessions I went to were one on fiscal oversight, one on STEM, combining STEM with art, which was very interesting. I attended one that was on working with different people and we did personality assessments. And they talked about in interrelationship skills, the importance of voice modulation, body language, eye contact, things like that. I do have some packets that I just tonight gave to Megan, so I apologize. I don't have them loaded, but she'll get those up for us. And that one had a really detailed packet that had a lot of really good information. One of the really interesting sessions I went to was called Drinking from the Information Fire Hose. And it talked about curating the abundance of information on the internet and lots of tips and tricks on on how to do that. News aggregators and lots of tricks on using social media so that you're not just spending all your time monitoring things, but to be more efficient in getting the information that is relevant to you and and that you're most interested in. So that was very interesting. Probably the the session I was most excited about, though, was on teaching students to code and design software using games. And it was it was really fascinating. They showed some examples of how of games even that elementary students had created on the computer. And they they use it not just to learn coding, but it makes it relevant to them. And they these games were that they were creating were actually educational games so that they could learn content area and also teach then there's their classmates could play the games and they can learn the content material. But they they use all the industry standard tools and, of course, you know, they did a little bit of a sales job and talked about how they're planning or there's anticipating that there's gonna the shortage of technology workers will probably double in the next couple of decades. So so that was, I thought, really, really interesting. And I know that we're doing some good things at the high school with that. And maybe at some point we'll be able to bring it down to some of the lower grade levels. I also really enjoyed the keynote speakers. I didn't get the opportunity to see Magic Johnson, but I heard it was spectacular. But Sir Ken Robinson was one of the speakers and I forget the first guy, but he was really, really interesting. He's a he writes columns for the New York Times.
I can't remember his name.
I can't either, but I've seen work that he's done since I've gotten home. Kind of a kind of a futurist a little bit, too, talking about trends and things like that. So.
Thank you. I thought we were only going to talk about one, but.
I I have all my reports. If you touch the link on there, they're they're all written out on on board docs. But I'm gonna talk about two. And I I only want to comment on on one of the general set sessions. There was a Blue Devils rhythm and blues band, which they were fantastic. They they had singers and, well, a blues band, but I think we all loved them. They were just a dream for a band. And I wish one of our bands could go to a national conference. But I'm gonna pass out. I don't have enough pads, post-its to go around, but you can all have a bracelet. These came from Justin's. One of the session sessions I went to was Justin's. What they 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 have a program, an app actually called School Connect. And they offer it for free to any school district. So it's kind of like our alert now. But if we wanted to pick it up, we can all the coaches could use it, any club could use it. So like if we're going to a state finals, the the a coach could just use the app and let all the parents know, hey, we're on our way back. We'll be there in fifteen minutes. You can come. And then you wouldn't have the parking lot all jammed up so you couldn't get out, although it's gonna happen anyway. But they a coach could use it for free. It any group could. It's just a really nice app. And I really think it might be worth checking out. There's no cost, no ties whatsoever to using it. I think what they want you to do is once you're on their site.
Upgrade for a fee?
Well, no, there's nothing with that. But, you know, check out everything else that Justin's offers.
Don't we use them?
We use I we use Justin's. Yeah. So they they offer all kinds of other things, coaching and and this and that. And one of the things I noticed when I said everything was about students was we are so fortunate that our graduation rate is what it is. Because if you notice these bracelets, they're speaking about a commitment to graduation and this is what Justin's offered. But so many sessions that I went to talked about how they they can't motivate their students to graduate. And it's just a big problem across the nation. And so we're really fortunate that way. You'll find a link, not to my reports, but I have a few of my articles in board docs. And one of them is, there's two of them on travel. One of it, one of them is Bon Voyage and the other one is about travel. And I found it interesting talking about W A, the N S B A offers a new travel policy. And I know we do have a travel policy, but I I think it might be worth looking at for an update and a review because I know our policy offers talks about insurance, that parents need to have insurance. But with international travel, some of the things they recommended having was checking our own liability insurance and that there are so many safety and security risks now when you're going abroad. And do we have a crisis management plan in place? And some we checking and rechecking the U S State Department Travel Advisories and the embassies in the other countries and having a keeping medical documents and all other travel documents from the students for seven years in case there should be any lawsuits for any reason. Because I I guess from what I heard, there are issues coming up with traveling. So this document that I have, it it's just worth going into and maybe looking at our own policy. While our policy was good, is good, I think. It we really could tweak it. And I I think Judy, you might be interested in looking at that. Also, they talked about not if you're gonna allow teachers to take children on trips that aren't school-sponsored, that's a great risk. And I'm not sure that we allow that anymore. We used to allow it in because my children went on them. But if you're gonna allow that, you need to have a policy regarding that so that there's no confusion with the citizens in your community so that they can turn it back to you saying you did sponsor it. Because if you hand anything out at school, they can say you did sponsor it if your teacher was in charge. So I thought that was really interesting. Usually I I tend to go towards sessions that deal a lot with policies and communication with the public. And I did that this year, including because we had one outburst at a meeting. I did go to one of those that showed videos of how to handle those types of situations. And quite a few of them have handouts on here that you might be interested. I I know we always have a lot of reading to do. But I think the the handouts at these sessions are valuable. So but it was a great conference and. So, but it, it was a great conference, and, uh, I think you heard Dr. Patz mention, we did learn some medical information also while we were there. Got to tour a hospital.
I'm just thinking about, I'm just thinking about when we walked out of the hospital.
Don't even mention that. Oh dear.
When we're not on mics, I guess. I, I think it was a great conference too, and, and I thank all three of you for going. I think it was a, a great experience for all of us. My issue was going in looking for accountability pieces, and, uh, there were, there were two things, let me preface that. I think when you go to those conferences, you find out that you wish you had all the money in the world to do what some of these districts do, but then you also look back and say, I'm glad we're not doing that, and what we are doing is pretty good too. So, there was that trade-off. But I was more interested in the accountability, and I, I think there were several sessions that all talked about, even though there was so much coming at us, we gotta be careful on how much we're throwing at our kids and our staffs and so on and so forth. I know Mike and Wendy have heard a little bit of this recently, but doing more is actually doing less, because you're just not getting the depth and so on and so forth. I know that's one of the concerns that we have here. But one of the interesting ones I went to was called ramping. Um, and I can't even remember the school district, I believe it was, I want to say Connecticut, but I'm not sure. And they talked, what the opening preface was that, uh, your kids are smarter than you think. And this district had done a longitudinal study for, I think it was ten years, where they took a look at, e- each year they would take a particular curriculum and drop it at a grade level, or a part of a curriculum and drop it at a grade level. And they would see how the kids adapted to it. And what they found out is they had zero experiences with kids that couldn't handle that particular portion of the grade level above them. So for example, if, if it was a fourth grade math issue, and they were gonna drop it on the third grade, just a part of it, whatever it might be, that they saw no evidence that those kids could not handle going, going up a grade level, so to speak. And, you know, we, that actually helped us in Chilton when we started maps testing. We had all these teachers that were telling us, well, these kids can't do this. We started doing map testing, and we found, wait a minute, these scores are telling us a whole different story here, what's going on? And, and I think there's value in being able to assess what you're doing sometimes, uh, because I think sometimes we hold kids back, they're smarter than we think they are. And I think when, especially in the age of technology, those kids can go leaps and bounds. So, uh, there was, there were quite a few sessions that talked about that, but there were a lot of sessions on communication I think were really good. Um, seemed to be quite a few on, on the implementation of the arts into the school day, into the different things that, uh, where you can implement the arts. Matter of fact, we talked to a young lady today that was talking about how she integrates arts into, uh, her teaching and so on and so forth. Uh, and I went to that expulsion one too, and I thought that was pretty good. Um, so there was, you know, go on and on and on, but I'm gonna, in the interest of time, we're already been here.
Was there anything on Common Core, or was that kind of a...
There was, there was. You know, and, uh, we were, I was in one session that I remember where we had some people that were just livid against it, and we had a few people over here that would, actually, it got, it turned into a yelling match, to a degree. The voices were raised, you know, and it really came down to the, the speaker at that time, just like he said, what about the Common Core don't you like? And it seemed like everybody that spoke against it was talking about the implementation of it. It's not what it was, and he would ask them, did you read it? No? Then what don't you like? Well, it was about, you know, it was, things were being forced on us. And the other people on the other side were, you know, well, we should have standards, and we should do all this, so, you know, everybody lies everywhere on it, but it's like a lot of legislation. And this guy, he did a, a survey of, uh, and he did it through, I think, aides of some kind, I don't know if it was Sen- Senator aides or whatever, and he asked them, he did a survey, how many of your senators that you're an aide for actually know what's in this document? And the percent was unbelievable, about how many of them never even read the document. And so that's a little bit scary, and then voting on these issues, so, a lot, a lot going on out there. And the food was good in New Orleans too.
Yes. Thank you. Item nine E, treasures report, Mrs. Kauski.
Oh, here we go. So, as of May twenty first, twenty fourteen, in the general fund, we have sixteen million oh five eight nine five five. In the debt service fund, we have two million nine nine five oh four two. And prior to June twenty, twenty fifth, we anticipate cash requirements in the amount of four million for the May thirty first and June fifteenth payrolls and payments payable. And that general fund is actually an increase from last year, last month, because of, uh, our receipt of, um, money from the city.
Right.
With the last, uh, property tax payment, or...
Uh, not the last one, but the third.
Okay. Are there any questions? Thank you. Item ten, board meeting debriefing, are there any comments on the meeting? All right, hearing done. Future agenda items, June eighteenth, the twenty fourteen fifteen budget first draft, June eighteenth, instructional services presentation, standard spaced learning, June eighteenth, Ben Franklin's school forest certification. I do not know what that is.
Which one?
School forest certification.
Uh, there, for what the, that's from Ben Franklin, and it's, uh, the kids do a project over there, and it just requires a certification process that they want to bring before the board.
Oh, okay. June eighteenth, we'll be recognizing an Eagle Scout who did a project for the, at the high school, and then June twenty fifth, a technology update. Anything else? Okay.
No.
Yes?
Will that eclipse yourself? Have that somewhere?
I, I would suggest, let us put it, put it in our, um, report, so it makes sense along with what else is being presented. It's not ready to go public, so to bring it to you now, I mean, we can show it to you, but we won't be able to show you exactly what the community will see. We can show you what the teachers do, but I think it would be important for you to see what the community would see as well.
Right.
So we'll, we'll put it in as soon as that's up and ready.
Okay.
It's a summer project for us.
Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
A motion. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Miss, Mrs. Leader, second by Mr. Nielsen. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Extension, uh, we are adjourned at eight thirty six.